All right, I'd like to call the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board Meeting to Order. It is Monday, October 16th at 6:30 PM. We are holding this as a hybrid meeting, meaning that we are in the Village Hall as well as on Zoom. The Zoom link is top of the agenda, as well as an audio call and number for those that choose to do that. With that, we have a quorum. The agenda was properly posted, and we'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next then, we have public appearances. This is public's opportunity to speak. If you wish, choose to speak, please share your name, your address, your municipality, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes, in case we have a lot of folks who would like to speak. With that, anybody in the room on Zoom, please raise your hand and come to the podium or in Zoom land, raise your hand and speak. All right, then we'll move to discussing. Whoa, somebody's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you, David.
Hi, I was looking for the raise hand button on the bottom, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Allison Mansell. I live at 217 Dentaria Drive in Cottage Grove. We've lived here for about four and a half years, and I have one daughter. I just wanted to briefly talk about how important the library programming that they do at the bank is to our family. Every Friday, my daughter and I go to the Storytime in Zumbini, and she wakes up in the morning and yells, "It's storytime, I'm so excited to go." And in the past year, I've just watched her grow and learn from all the, attending all these classes. And if we were able to get a library and have more opportunities, I'm sure the community would utilize these. And I just wanted to share how important those are to the mothers and families in the community.
All right, thank you, Allison. Anyone else on Zoom? Thank you, David. All right, then, with that, we'll move to discuss and consider our meeting minutes, held from a regular board meeting on October 2nd. Any questions, comments, edits regarding the meeting? Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Well, second.
First and second, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Sliding down then to new business. First, we have discuss and consider a claim of damages from Matthew Adams related to tree removal. Rick?
Yeah, so the memo is provided to all of you on this claim. So the village received a claim for approximately $2,000 for tree removal. The trees were in the village right of way, but weren't requested to be removed, is my understanding. But we reviewed the claim and would recommend denial at this time.
All right, any questions for board members?
Why did they remove the trees?
I guess I would, I don't want to get into the specifics of it, just because this would be, you know, if a lawsuit is filed at some point, it would be, I just don't want this open discussion to be used, I guess. But I'm not entirely sure on why the trees were removed from the right of way.
Is it material to understand any of that for whether or not we would approve such a claim, or, I mean?
So they were village trees, but the village did not request it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment? Please, there is somebody.
Excuse me?
That's the claimant.
Claimant, yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, I guess this would be the, you guys could offer to let him speak, but this would be your discussion. I guess my recommendation would be just to move forward tonight. Or if you have questions, we could look at it. I could answer them outside of the meeting, and we could address that at a future meeting.
Okay.
Okay, can you just add?
All right, thank you, Matthew. Any other discussion? Any questions for Rick?
I'll make a motion to deny the claim for damages from Matthew Adams relating to tree removal.
Is there a second?
No, second.
We have a motion on second then, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next then is to discuss and consider the modification of Chapter Eight, Section of the Health Insurance Opt-Out in the Personal Policy Manual. This one is for you, JJ, I believe.
Well, JJ brought it to the memo, I'll, I can speak on this one. This shouldn't really have come to a surprise. The goal was to bring the whole personnel policy to the board tonight, just in the state that it is in. It just hasn't finished removal, or, sorry, hasn't gone through the full set of approval on our side. So the one thing that's kind of time pertinent, because open enrollment only goes until October 20th, is the proposed new language in regards to the insurance opt-out. This is actually estimated to save the village money. So while we're increasing the opt-out incentive, the cost to actually provide health insurance is significantly more than what we're offering here. So at this time, I'll answer any questions, but my recommendation would be to update based off of the proposed language.
Is there a current opt-out?
Yep, the current opt-out is a hundred, or $100 per month, or $1,200.
Oh. Is that for a single person?
It's for both. It doesn't matter what.
I'll make a motion to approve the modification, Chapter Eight, Section One, Health Insurance Opt-Out in the Personnel Policy Manual as presented in our packet.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second then, any further discussion?
How did we land on the amount versus what we paid today? What was the, like, what was the impetus to change it from what it is today?
So back in 2013, I kind of inflated it up to what, you know, 2024 values would be. On top of it, kind of just, kind of projected out what health insurance costs have risen since then. While this isn't, it's just basically enough to make employees think without making the incentive too large in comparison to the cost savings, if that makes sense. So if, if we could put this into perspective, for a family insurance, it, you know, cost the village around $20,000. So if we save, you know, if somebody opts out, that's potential $15,000 cost savings. So again, we thought the 1,200 was low to make somebody, you know, think about the decision.
So I guess the question for me is the ratio similar? Was the, was the cost of health insurance in 2013 $5,000? And so 1,200 bucks made sense, and now the cost is $20,000, so $5,000? Is the cut, I guess is the ratio?
The ratio is not the same. It's probably a slightly better, better for the employee. I think we have a couple instances where employees have, you know, have both spousal coverage and their, that at least they have the option to do one or the other. So really, the goal here was try to kind of incentivize, okay, well, maybe the village's health insurance is a little bit better, but I don't, if I choose not to take it, that's an extra $5,000.
And is that, how, do we have folks taking advantage of that today?
We currently have two.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion on second then?
Aye.
With that, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right, next then, Slide Two, Reports from Village Boards, Commissions, and Committees. First up is Cottage Grove Fire District, David.
Yep, so we don't actually have a, nothing's changed since the last meeting. We just weren't able to get into the agenda, the Town of Pleasant Springs agreement. So we did talk about it. It was approved at the last fire commission meeting. So we're just bringing this forward just for approval tonight, because we couldn't make it in the last agenda, so. Trying to think of some high points here. I mean, relatively unchanged from the last time. I think the dollar amounts are a little bit different, but again, keeping within the same 1% per year for the duration of the agreement, year over year. I did, I will say, if you do look at the, at page four from the financial arrangements with Pleasant Springs, I, you know, it is fairly low. We did talk about that at fire commission. However, the overwhelming majority of calls in Pleasant Springs are on the interstate. So they're not, it's generally not Pleasant Springs residents who are, are calling. And since the construction ended, the calls have continued to go down more and more. So we approved it in the commission unanimously, so any questions I can answer?
Any feedback from the volunteers regarding whether this is advantageous to them? I mean, you know, Chief, you're here, but, please, I think that would be helpful for at least me.
Hit the little guy on the top.
It's in the, yeah, in the middle.
So before we went into renewal, we actually asked all the members if they continued to want to do it, to take on the extra work, and it was overwhelming that they wanted to continue doing the agreement. So their standpoint is they don't mind the extra work, because the extra equipment and funding, we get out of it.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any other questions or comments, since we have Chief here, he's been kind enough to come in?
Just, just have a quick question. Just trying to understand to some extent, at the 1% increase year over year, what, what were kind of some of the factors that went into that?
That's just historically what it, what it has been.
Okay.
We pretty much, the fees that we're charging right now for this agreement is pretty similar to what we first started charging back in 2009. But that was based on the fact that our call volume has pretty much been cut in half. So at the time that the contract was originally put together, we were doing around 100 calls a year, and now we're doing just under 50. So the value's still the same, but we're charging about, you know, kind of charging more per call, basically, so.
Thank you, that, that makes sense, the decreased costs, thank you.
And I think too, Cameron, just to, I'll beat a dead horse here. I mean, again, the majority of Pleasant Springs calls are on the interstate, which it's, they're passing by. They're not, traditionally, it hasn't been Pleasant Springs residents. So it's just, you know, victim of where you are at the time, when you have to make the call, right?
And of the 50 some calls that we get, 40 to 50 calls we get, 20% of those were canceled before we even get on scene. So there's a lot of them where we're not really doing anything, other than sometimes we get canceled before we even leave the station, sometimes we get canceled before we get there. So it's, it's been a pretty good contract for us over these years, so.
I'll make another note, too. I mean, because of the command vehicle on top of that, right, they can, one of the chiefs can get there before, like, hey, we don't need this apparatus, we need this, should Danco send the wrong thing? So it's, we've put a lot of time and effort on the commission to try to right-size this. And again, keeping in mind to, like, EMS and fire, and then on top of it, we don't, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but like, we don't cover all of Pleasant Springs, right? Like, some of fires.
No, it's split between us, Stoughton, and McFarland. And McFarland's got a small sliver of it, and Stoughton and Cottage Grove are the two major, majority holders.
Roughly a third, so it's, that, again, we had a long conversation with the commission about, like, the fee structure. And there is a clause in here, like, like you can't get out clause, basically, in layman's terms. You know, and I painted all kinds of horror scenarios, like, what happens if, what happens if, you know, the federal government, the DOT, comes through, and all of a sudden, we go from three lanes to half a lane or something? Like, just something ridiculous, right? And again, the, the membership's been very adamant, like, they're willing to support this, and it, and the chiefs were very adamant, like, no matter what horror scenario I can dream up, this will be fine.
Yep, and I think the, the decreased calls definitely justifies the only 1%. Just being on the financial side, seeing that just inflation overall is much greater than the term of this contract at the 5%. Just wanted to make sure that our residents had that information.
Any other questions from board members?
And I would make a motion to approve the agreement for fire protections and rescue services for the Town of Pleasant Springs as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brittany. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right, thanks, Chief, again.
Thank you.
All right, nothing else there, David? Okay. Next then, public works, Heidi.
Yep, thanks. So we met on Wednesday, October 4th, and we briefly went over the solar panels, which we're still waiting, on MSB, which we're still waiting for one piece before the whole connection can be made, and also still waiting on the state for lighting options for the Glacial Drum and Trailhead parking lot, as previously discussed. We also went over 2024 budget proposal, which will be discussed in depth coming up. And then you do have a memo here that Brian distributed, and it's talking about some additional lighting we're looking for on Clark Street near, on, and Grove, near the skate park to help with people navigating around when the lights aren't on, make sure no one falls into the skate park, make sure the property can be monitored appropriately, just to improve safety and security around the new Wheels Park. Kind of the summary here, I don't know, Brian, if you wanted to add anything?
Yeah, thanks, Heidi. So these funds would be coming out of the Road Maintenance Fund. Currently, right now, we have about $45,000 in there. This would be taking out $13,000, leaving us with roughly, Heidi, it's on the paper, $33,000 left in that fund. Everything is up to date as far as payments. It's always nice to keep a small buffer in there in case things do creep up. But these lights are being, so this was in the transition from MSA to Strand, and obviously, streetlights kind of fell through the cracks. So this is going to just kind of rectify that.
But the 2023 projects were under enough that we have savings that we could utilize then for this purpose?
Correct.
Would the lights be installed yet this year, or?
Most likely, yes. If it is approved tonight, I will be working with Alliant as soon as tomorrow.
Okay.
As far as generating a schedule.
And then I had a different question about the solar panels. So the agreement that we have for the construction of the solar panels, do we have any remediation or anything backing this for the lengthy, lengthy delays in getting this up and going?
We have had discussions at staff level.
Okay.
About that, yeah. Yeah, no, like, firm recommendations at this point, but we're, we've talked about it.
Okay, as it has, we continue to be delayed and delayed?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Rick. Anything else, Heidi? Sorry.
No, but this is, we would have to approve the road project redirecting it for the lighting tonight if we want to go ahead with it. But that's all I had from our meeting, unless, I guess, Chris, did you have anything to add, or Brian?
I guess, just out of curiosity, and I was around for this, but I don't, how did we miss the lights? Is it just, just because of the switchover?
All you have to do is say MSA.
Fair.
Okay.
But I just, I remember approving that project, but I feel like I remember somebody asking about lights. And so like, how do we, I mean, I guess things happen, but it's still disappointing, out of all things, like.
Because the project's lit, like, the skate park lights, but then to have other.
Because we talked a lot about the street, like, the, the lights across Bocken. We've talked about that quite a bit, but to miss it. And then it says in the quote, how many, how many lights are we talking about? Six, six poles? Does that sound right, Brian?
Yeah, six poles, one's got a double head over the skate, or the Wheels Park.
Okay.
Improved security in that area. You know, and it was, I don't want to say this is an easy thing to miss, but, you know, historically, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe there were lights out there originally. So it's one of those things that, when they weren't out there initially, it's, it's one of those things that fell through the cracks.
Okay. I'll make a motion to repurpose 2023 road project funds to Clark and Grove Street, to the Clark and Grove Street lighting, lighting project.
All right, thank you, David, is there a second?
Second.
Brittany, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right, Joint Review Board, that's actually me. We met on October 5th. This is the discussion, Joint Review Board is reviewing all the TIDS with the various municipal jurisdictions that are involved in the taxing of those TIDS. So that would be the school districts, the county, the Madison College, that, all the folks involved there. So you just, literally, Elris goes through and walks through where things are at. So Greg did that for us on that particular evening. It was, the resolution, there was a resolution at the end acknowledging the annual reports, which was approved by all those involved. And that's what that particular meeting was about. Any questions?
How long was the meeting, Jeff?
I didn't write down a closing time, but we were done with, within an hour. Okay.
Thirty, it was like 35 minutes, not, not very long.
Yeah.
I would say the only key thing is, this board has to approve a, a resolution formally terminating TID 7, the last meeting in March. We, we can't do it now, because that sets the countdown into when the final accounting date is. So we'll bring that to this board. And Greg and I are working on a more precise date on TID 5, too, but we fully expect that district to close early.
Thank you, Cameron. Half hour, hour, sorry, it just blends in for me, it's all right. Anything else, David? Should have wrote that down, next time I will. Then we'll move to CDA, David.
Yep, met Monday, October 9th at 5:30, opened the meeting, approved the minutes. And then Brad Nellis from the Distillery came, he did have a video draft. We figured as a group, it was probably just easier just to email us a link, we can all watch on our own time. So that's what we did. So Brad was around, it was a quick meeting for, for Brad. And then the bulk of the conversation was the village board decision to direct the CDA to meet as needed. I think there were, I don't want to say concerns, but I think there were questions around, should the CDA continue to meet? In terms of, should we meet more often, should we meet as needed? Aaron and I kind of outlined kind of the way things are. I think there were some questions around, should we talk about existing TIDS and how we could use funds? Or, you know, should we, should the CDA be used as a, kind of a sounding board? So I think, I think Aaron and I kind of handled those questions, is, you know, and I think everyone was relatively comfortable with the decision. And so then we closed the meeting. It's a quick one.
Thank you, David. Then, are there any questions there? We'll move to Plan Commission. I'll give us a whirl, and then anybody can jump in. So we met on October 11th. Main discussion point there was some changes, both preliminary and final plan, for the parcels in front of Shady Grove along Highway BB or Cottage Grove Road. Making those to be zero lot line duplex product that, that the folks at William Ryan Homes are planning to put together. They're getting some demand for this type of housing, so that's the thrust of their request. This, these parcels were never zoned or whatever, so that, that was discussion. So walk through that, we had, did have a public hearing on it, didn't have anybody that sounded off on it. The commission recommended approval of both, both plats. Legal confirmed that it was okay, because it was only a slight change to hold those both in one meeting. And that was pretty much the end of that. So we do have two of these for discuss and consider. I can let, Aaron, you can fill in kind of the staff recommendations for all this, for these.
Sure, and we do have Mike Cockens here in the audience, the project engineer, if there are any questions, but it's pretty straightforward. The planning conditions, as you recall, a couple months ago, we had two certified survey maps that were part of this development. Since the plat is kind of based off of those, we just want to make sure those get recorded first. It didn't look like they had been, as of the Plan Commission meeting. Just a reminder, there will be a fee in lieu of parkland dedication due for these units. There was parkland that was dedicated, which offset some of the single-family homes, but would not account for any of these. Another reminder, just about sewer and water impact fees that will be due. And four and five ended up not really being relevant, because they're not intending to have design covenants, because William Ryan is building the buildings themselves, or any kind of a neighborhood association. And the Plan Commission did add one condition, allowing the developer to play around with the lot lines in lots two through six. In the previous design, they had all kind of come to a point, which is a little bit awkward for maintenance and things like that. And Mike did send over a revised version today that kind of straightens that out a little bit, so. There were some engineering conditions, too, and I believe Kyla's online, if, Kyla, you want to jump in on those? Kyla, you might be double muted, I don't know.
Are you guys able to hear me now? Sorry about that.
Oh, it's all right.
Awesome. Yes, the engineering conditions were very straightforward. It had to do with some utility aspects that Mike and Debbie have been working through with Houston in terms of restoration as well and layout. They have been working through that corresponding with me directly. So we should be all good on our end with approvals.
All right, thank you.
I would just note, the conditions are the same for both the preliminary and the final.
Any questions for Kyla or Aaron or Mike? It's easier.
Just looking at the plat, can you tell me about, can you tell me about Lot 6? Because it looks like most of it's in the, in, what is that, Environmental Corridor? I'm just curious about that lot.
Yeah, so the area that's in the corridor wouldn't be buildable. It would just be buildable along the front edge, kind of towards the north or west side of that lot.
Okay, thanks.
None of these were zoned previously?
The zoning was approved two months ago. We changed those to the two-family residential. This is just filling in the rest of the lots. From rural holding.
Thank you.
Do I have to say all the numbers in my motion? Okay, good. I'd like to make a motion to approve the preliminary plots for William Ryan Homes to create the 20 parcels from the existing parcels, as mentioned in our agenda, with staff recommendations.
All right, thank you, Brittany.
Second.
Second, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
I'll make a second motion for the approval for the final plat for the William Ryan Homes to create the 20 parcels from the existing parcel numbers, as mentioned in our agenda, with staff recommendations.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next then, we have, thanks, Mike. Zoning Board of Appeals, Aaron, I think.
Yeah, we had a request for a variance from a resident on Clark Street, one of the older parts of the neighborhood. They wanted to expand their home. Due to the layout of the lot, they could only really extend forward, but the front setback kind of prevented that from happening. It was a valid request. It was a valid request because a lot of the homes kind of predate the zoning ordinance in that area, and a lot of them are built much closer than the 25 feet that is the requirement now. So the Board of Appeals did grant that variance.
Any questions there from board members? All right, then, reports from village officers. Rick, anything from you today?
Nothing to report.
All right. For me, I have discuss and consider a nomination for a person for the Zoning Board of Appeals for the alternative. It's so funny that we had, just had that, and now we've got somebody that will fill that slot, hopefully. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve Dasan Kinningenberg to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Communication Business, first up there is to take a look at the vouchers. Any questions, comments regarding the vouchers as presented?
Make a motion to approve the bills as written.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Correspondence, I don't have anything that didn't go already to the board. I don't know if anybody else has anything. Next then, upcoming community events. We have the trick-or-treaters coming up before we know it, on Halloween, 4:30 to 7:30. Okay? Anything else anybody wants to mention?
We did get an email from John Russell. November 14th at 6:30 PM is the Cottage Grove Community Foundation's annual meeting.
All right, thank you, David. Then we'll move to future agenda items. Anything there that, JJ, you want to mention?
Yep, as Cameron referenced earlier, the Personnel Manual updates will be coming shortly. Per our labor attorney, we're going to wait until PD Union contract negotiations are wrapped up. But shortly after that, we'll be bringing forth recommendations on updates in the Personnel Manual.
Thank you, JJ.
Are we going to be able to do a briefing on school grounds?
Oh, working on it.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris, for reminding us.
Need to find an attorney, essentially.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody. I can report that we have secured counsel, and either in November or December, we will address that matter.
All right, thanks, Matt. Go back, go back to that little one.
He's right next to me.
Okay, even better. Yeah, exactly. All right, with, with that then, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session. This is a closed session in regards to the potential land acquisition in TID number nine and the establishment of a negotiation position. The Village of Cottage Grove Village Board will enter a closed session pursuant to the United States Statute 19.85, Part C1, Part E, deliberately negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or the conducting of other specified public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll have a real...
Aye, embalming.
Aye.
All right, we're back from closed session.
I'd like...
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that the village enters an agreement for offer to purchase on the property 123 East Cottage Grove Road.
Second.
We have a motion second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next then, we slide two.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Undebatable, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.